Everyone. It is November 3rd. We're in November already. And we have our school board member, Michael Torres from Renaissance High School, the coolest high school in the district. Michael, will you do us the honor and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Of course I will. Of course.
It's nice to see everyone's faces again after this morning's workshop and some new faces here in the building. We welcome those who are here for the purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address, and we have some new forms where you're able to do that now. You may also request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or staff. The board has met in closed session today regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Public hearing, we have none. Call for agenda items for separate action and adoption of the agenda as posted. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the agenda?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, we'll do the roll call vote starting on that end. Last meeting, I got caught up in going back and forth. So, Mr. Otto.
No.
You don't approve the agenda?
Oh, I thought you said something else. Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So that item passes 5-0. Approval of our minutes from our October 20th meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Do the roll call vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so minutes pass 5-0. And I have the great honor of reintroducing our school board, student board member, Michael Torres from Renaissance. Welcome, Michael.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon, everybody. I'm happy to be here. My name is Michael Torres. I am from, the president of ASB from Renaissance High School for the Arts, the best art school in the district. And, yeah, I'm a 12th grader this year, so this is my last year at Renaissance sadly. But I have been in ASB all four years, and this year has been a fun one so far. So, as many of you know, our work doesn't just start off like when the school year starts off, our work starts before then. So this year, we were at Renaissance for about a month before we actually started school, and all of ASB was getting together. We were reintroducing ourselves because a lot of new faces, people we've never seen after a whole COVID year and a half. So we were happy to see each other and be able to work together. So we were there for a good month, planning, getting everything together so that everyone, when they came back, felt welcome and like if no time had ever passed. So that was our first month, and we did a lot of planning. So for our second day of school, we had a pancake breakfast for all of our students. It was free, so no one had to pay a single penny. It was just a welcome back to Renaissance, welcome back to person, being a person again, talking to people, because a lot of us needed that, me personally. So that was our second day of school. For our first week, we just wanted to be a very chill week, everyone just coming back and getting to know each other again. Then we started like planning all of our soon-to-come events, our Welcome Back Fest, which was our second week of school. We just had games and free stuff for all of our students. Again, no one had to pay a single penny for that. We, all the donations of everyone's heart. So that was our first two weeks. After that, we have just been busy planning our biggest event so far, which is Halloween Fest, which we just had last week. It was a great event, everyone, all of our clubs came out and sold their amazing foods, their drinks, everyone was happy. That was pretty, that's our year so far.
So, sounded like a really good first nine weeks of the school year.
It sure has, sure has been.
So happy to hear that. And then, what are your plans after graduation?
So I am currently applying to Cal State Monterey Bay. Hopefully, I get to go there. I've always wanted to go to one of the Cal States, so that's always been one of my dreams.
And are you thinking about any majors or careers at this point?
So I am currently in the performing arts pathway for theater, so I would like to continue doing that in the future.
Very awesome. They have an awesome theater of engagement program at Monterey Bay.
Yeah, I'm always looking for like different places because although I've always heard that like LA is the place to be for entertainment, I'm like, there's so much more out there. I've always, I've always been in Long Beach, so I just want to see what is out there. I want to see where the people are.
Plus you have Canary Row and Pebble Beach right down the road, and... Any other questions from my colleagues here?
Some of us knew where you were going, that sound familiar.
I want to see, want to see them dancing.
Ah, we finally get to hear that voice, Mr. Miller, finally. Michael, we're so glad that you can join us today. We know that it's a school night, so if you got to get going.
I was joined by my lovely vice president here too. We have been working together in ASB for as long as I can remember. She has been with me, so I'm glad she was here to support me today.
Do you want to acknowledge her by name?
Lotus LaGuardia.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you, Michael.
Of course.
So let's move on to recognitions and acknowledgements, our student, staff, and school celebrations.
Hello, everyone. My name is Laura H. Castillo-Roberts. I am a Spanish teacher at McBride High School. Presently, I have 25 years of serving Long Beach Unified proudly. In Mexico, I studied to become a kindergarten teacher and a BE teacher. So I already had 10 years working in my country as a teacher. When I came here, I passed all the tests, then I applied for Long Beach Unified. They were looking for a kindergarten bilingual teacher. So I interviewed, I accepted the position, and it was very amazing because it was actually my dream. I wanted to become a teacher here. Long Beach Unified gave me many trainings to better my teaching skills. I'm very happy because I became a national board certified teacher, and I coach teachers. That's one of the things that I love about teaching. When you learn and you are trained, the better way to be appreciative is that you don't give it to yourself, you need to give it to other teachers. When students are looking at the needs in the community and bring it into the classroom, we always need to take into consideration that all our students bring a vast array of culture, patterns of life, knowledge, that not because they cannot express it in English, that doesn't mean they are not intelligent or they don't have skills. But if you, as a teacher, recognize that and you assure them that what they're doing, what they bring with them is valuable, then you have a lot of flowers blooming.
That was great. Thank you, Mr. Itzen, once again for putting those together for us. Let's move on to public testimony on items listed on the agenda. So just quick check in what he says, we didn't have any items today. Thank you, James. So then we will move on to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda, and let's start off with our first speaker. 14. Yes. Hi, good afternoon, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. Hello, board members. My name is Diana Michelson, and I'm a sophomore, sorry, not sophomore, a junior at Long Beach Polytechnic High School, and I'm also the founder and leader of the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign. And we are a student-led initiative that are working to pass a 100% clean renewable energy resolution that commits the district to 100% clean renewable energy in the electricity sector by 2030 and in all other energy sectors by 2040. And today, I just wanted to give a quick progress update on the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign, and in addition to celebrating a lot of the LBUSD victories in terms of energy sustainability and environmental action, and like mentioned before, also give a quick update on our campaign. So since our launch in August of 2020, we've had the opportunity to meet personally with board members Megan Kerr, Diana Craighead, and Juan Benitez, and on top of that, we are so grateful for Alan Rising and Kristy McFagan, the newly appointed LBUSD Sustainability Coordinator, who have been meeting with us regularly to discuss our initiative. In February, our campaign met in a conjoined meeting with LBUSD Facilities Director, Mr. Rising, and the San Diego Unified School District Facilities Director, Mr. Lee Dolgoff, and this was because San Diego Unified successfully passed a net zero emissions resolution a couple of years ago, and have currently been in the process of actually following through on that resolution. We then met with Ms. Hanway and Ms. Discher from SoCal Edison, who also work with LBUSD, and they helped discuss clean energy plans that are offered by SoCal Edison that LBUSD can opt into. Our student-led initiative has also held a Long Beach Green Schools Campaign Student-Led Climate Rally, which was a family-friendly event this September, and it was designed to garner community support for a 100% clean renewable energy resolution. We were joined by over 100 participants and are extremely grateful for board members Megan Kerr and Doug Otto, who were actually able to show up. So on top of all of the COVID-19 craziness, we're extremely grateful for the work that the district has put in, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Diana. And just a reminder, Diana, we covered through our facilities update at our board workshop this morning, an update regarding our sustainability.
Thank you so much. I will definitely check that out. Have a good day.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello. My name is Angelique Gonzalez. Thank you, Long Beach Unified School District, for having me speak today. Today, I'd like to share why it is important to me that LBUSD transitions off of fossil fuels and onto clean renewable energy. Before I fully understood what climate change was, the image of a polar bear family on a small block of ice would come to mind. Now I know that the problems which people have caused for Earth stretch far deeper than that. All throughout my life, I've had an appreciation for our planet's natural beauty and unique creatures. No amount of technological advancements can compare to the joy and peace that I feel when standing in front of a giant waterfall or listening to the melody of chirping birds. It never occurred to me that everything I know and love about our planet could change in an instant, and it would be entirely our fault. One event that reminded me of the urgent need for a combat to climate change was a day in middle school where the sky turned orange. There had been many fires near our area, and the air quality became so bad that we had to wear N95 masks at school. That day, I thought to myself, if no one changes their attitude towards climate change, will this be our new reality? The idea didn't seem impossible, as the summers became embarrassingly hot and the river near my house became deserted and lifeless. Although the rate of Earth's climate, of changing climate, may not be so obvious from our Long Beach homes, the state of our planet is worsening at an alarming rate. You may be thinking, our Long Beach School District is just one in a million. How could we possibly save the planet or make any significant change? Well, everything counts. Every effort made towards improving our environment is an effort well spent. If LBUSD transitions as soon as possible, beginning with the passing of 100% clean energy resolution, we would also serve as climate leaders in our nation and encourage others to take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelique. And Angelique, I just shared with Diana that we gave a facilities update at this morning's workshop, where we talked about sustainability efforts in our district.
Thank you so much.
It's on YouTube.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Mathias, and I've been a pediatric registered nurse at a large LA County hospital for over 20 years. I'm also the mother of four LBUSD students. Thank you for letting me come today. I'm here on behalf of the medical community as well as concerned parents. I'm not here for a political cause or any kind of support for that. I just want to be clear on that in case anyone tries to misquote me. I'm here as a healthcare advocate and a healthcare professional for our children. I'm here to give an eyewitness account of what I observed during the last 18 months during this COVID-19 pandemic. And I'll tell you what I saw. I saw empty pediatric beds. I saw empty hallways. I saw nurses, myself included, getting phone calls telling me not to come into work because we didn't have enough patients to take care of for that day. Some of the slowest 18 months I've seen in the last over 20 years that I've been there, and I don't work at a small hospital, I work at a large LA county-based trauma center hospital. No kids were getting COVID, and if they were, they were not getting sick from it. They came in for something else, a broken arm, a leg, and they just happened to test positive, but they were largely asymptomatic. The number of kids who were asymptomatic, I can count on less than two hands, and this was a long period of time. They had relatively no symptoms, especially children 14 and under. They were perfectly healthy. I can tell you what kind of patients we did have in that 18 months. A lot of automobile vehicles, a lot of increased suicide attempts, and mental health issues from teenagers resulting from all this social isolation and all the COVID protocols that we had to take. I also saw a 13-year-old boy who came in for myocarditis after having gotten the vaccine. He's 13, and he's having, myocarditis is inflammation of the heart. He's having heart attack-like symptoms. These risks are unnecessary for so many of these children, and I just want to ask you to consider that as these vaccines become available, to realize that our children's bodies were made to fight these things, and kids are not dying from COVID. They die from cars, but we still put our kids in cars every day, but they're not dying from COVID. So please, do not make parents have to choose between protecting their children's health and the ability to receive a free education. Please do not agree to mandating this medically unnecessary vaccine. And please don't use the argument, we need to vaccinate children to protect the adults. No, we need adults to protect children. That's always the way that it should be. Join me by refusing to mandate the vaccine and continue to allow them to receive this wonderful education at Long Beach Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Good afternoon, welcome.
Oh, thank you very much. My name is Matt Lovinduski. I appreciate the opportunity. Tonight, I ask the board to seize the opportunity to make a public statement prior to January 3rd, 2022, that affirms your commitment to supporting diversity of experience, equitable access to all aspects of the Long Beach Unified School District education system, and the inclusion of every Long Beach Unified student in an in-person classroom education with their peers, regardless of COVID vaccination status. It is up to each of you to summon the courage and stand against any state mandate that obstructs equal protection under the law. The community will support your stand against segregating children based on violative mandates that will embrace those who will champion diversity of informed decisions, equitable access to our system, and the inclusion of all of our Long Beach children in the classroom with their peers. Again, I appreciate this opportunity, and I look forward to the board's statement affirming in-classroom, in-person education for all of our Long Beach students regardless of vaccination status. Thank you for helping to hold the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Evans is on my list. Good afternoon, welcome. Just going to ask you to lift your mask up over your nose, please. Thank you.
Yeah, so I've given you a letter, I'm going to read excerpts of it. On September 29th, the National School Boards Association wrote a letter to President Biden on behalf of our state associations and more than 90,000 school board members who govern our country's 14,000 local public school districts. Letter asked, quote, "The federal government investigate, intercept, and prevent the current threats and acts of violence against our public school officials through existing statutes, executive authority, interagency, and intergovernmental task force, and other extraordinary measures to ensure the safety of our children and educators." It specifically solicits the expertise and resources of the Department of Justice, FBI, Department of Homeland Security, and Secret Service. The letter characterized parental involvement in school board meetings as the equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism and hate crimes. As a citizen of LBUSD, a taxpayer and voter, I have the following questions. Does the board agree with the NSBA that involvement of federal law enforcement agencies is required to maintain order at our local school board meetings? Does the board agree with the NSBA that parental involvement in opposition to school board policies is equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism? Does the California School Boards Association agree with the letter from NSBA? Does the school board participate in NSBA and/or CSBA? How much of the dues and other expenses associated with membership in either organization? Does the board plan to continue its affiliation with these groups? And does the NSBA speak for this board? As a taxpayer and parent, I suggest that membership groups like the School Boards Association are an unnecessary drain on resources that could instead be directed toward classroom for the benefit of our district's students and teachers. I'm available to meet with you about these concerns at your convenience. I look forward to your response to the questions above. Thank you for the work that you do on behalf of our community's children and parents.
Thank you, Paul. And we received a copy of the letter.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Gerald Schaefer, and thank you for being here. I think a lot of you are aware of something that might be going on behind the scenes. I'm sure there's some of you who are very much on board with things, and I'm not really addressing you because there's many like that, including my own children. But some of you have thought, or have some questions about what's going on, and that's who I'm addressing. Some of you are not sure about if everything you've been told is true. So that's, I'm talking to you, and I think it's your responsibility because you're in charge of our children. It's especially serious now that they're going down to the five-year-olds, five to 11. People who are least able to know what's going on cannot possibly have informed consent. The emergency authorization that they're using to do this is not justifiable, is not legal, because there are preventative measures which can be used, but they've not been allowed to use them. So the emergency use is, it will fall flat. This thing will unravel. And the UK right now, there's lawyers handing out, serving papers to every school district, letting them know that they will be liable, whatever their part was in it, whether they agreed, whether they were silent, whether they said they didn't know what was going on. So it's a very serious matter, and I think if you could do that, it's a Long Beach Unified School District, if your board members could stand up and say, no, we're not going along with this, would be pretty powerful. The truth is going to unravel, it's going to come out eventually. So you can't hide behind authority. You know that you cannot trust what we're being told. So all I ask of you, those of you that have any questions about it, look into it, follow your conscience.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you. One last thing, certainly our...
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Lowe. Dr. Baker, LBUSD board members, thank you for your time today. I have a son at Wilson High School. My voice is for the many families in our school district. I oppose vaccine mandates specifically for children for the following three reasons. First, a vaccine mandate is medically unnecessary. Thankfully, children are at a remarkably low risk as it applies to COVID SARS II. There is no data indicating that a vaccine mandate for in-person learning would improve on this risk to children and their peers. According to CDC data, January 1, 2020 through October 20, 2021, of the 9 million Californians in the 0-17 age range, 47 have tragically died with the virus. This accounts for roughly .0005 of the Californians in that age range. A child is 10 times more likely to be killed by a falling tree than to die of COVID. In addition to the remarkably limited risk factor we have seen in the last two months, a waning of the efficacy of the vaccine's ability to eliminate the acquisition of the virus or its ability to eliminate the transmission of the virus. In addition, excuse me, a vaccine mandate provides limited long-term benefit as it relates to the viral acquisition or viral transmission. It would be considered abusive to submit a child to unnecessary medical procedures or force children to ingest unnecessary medicines. Second, the unknown risk to children. We simply don't know and don't have long enough data in terms of carcinogenic, multigenic, or fertility-related impacts of the vaccine on children. Submitting a child to a mandate without fully accounting for the carcinogenic, mutagenic, or fertility-related impacts is thoroughly unacceptable. And finally, a vaccine mandate creates a new and immoral policy of separate but equal. Removing a child from the classroom and carelessly dismissing the diversity of medical choices of their parents violates the principles of Californians' commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. A mandate will create a segregated community built on a foundation of ignorant discrimination by those who refuse to embrace science and who disregard the diversity of responsible, informed medical choices of parents. In closing, I'd like to say that we really should stop calling these vaccine mandates because it's really an experimental drug mandate. Words do matter. Even the FDA panel admitted these are experimental drugs, and their testing is being carried out on the general population. Quoting Dr. Eric Rubin... Quoting Dr. Eric Rubin, "We're never gonna learn about how safe the vaccine is until we start giving it." That's the way it goes. Don't believe me, please inform yourselves. Then let's hold the line, but let's hold it together. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, hello.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello, hi. My name is Sochi Gonzalez. I'm back again, not because I don't have anything better to do, but because I am a concerned parent. I'm concerned about the mandates being imposed on our children.
Sochi, can I just ask you to-
Yes, sir.
Put your mask on over your nose. Thank you.
Can I also make a comment about that? Because I have a medical mask exemption that I was about to show Sergeant outside. And I was gonna use the face shield, but they said you guys are not allowing that. So I just wanted to make note of that, that I do have a medical mask exemption letter from my doctor, but I was told that I was not able to come in here without a mask, so-
So someone from our staff, if you'd like to share that with someone from our staff, the medical exemption, we're more than happy to-
Do you want to stop the clock?
Yeah, your clock is stopped.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have someone from our staff collect that from you. I'm gonna ask you to go back outside, Sochi, and then we can make a determination.
I don't have it in writing. I have it in a picture.
Yeah, so then in the meantime, I am gonna ask you to keep your mask on.
Okay, then it's okay. I'll keep it on for this time. I'll just, I'll be better prepared for next time. That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So can we restart the clock? Let me see, I have three minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So although the COVID vaccine has not yet been mandated-
If you could just, again, just bring the mask over your nose, Sochi. Thank you.
Okay. So although the COVID vaccine has not yet been mandated, I'm concerned. I'm speaking to the parents, and that's the parents watching from home. The parents of Long Beach, if you are as concerned as I am and require help, guidance, support, or direction, I encourage you to visit our Instagram page, LB Parents United, where you will find our link tree with an array of resources, letters, notices, and tips. We look forward to getting better acquainted with you. You can also reach us by email at LBParentsUnited@gmail.com. We are a resource group for parents who are concerned about mandates, and we have over 1,200 members and growing. I also want to remind everyone that America still has no approved FDA vaccine. All vaccines are still under emergency use authorization. This is, there is no package label disclosing safety information, and the consent forms are the same. They still remain the same stating that the shot is investigational. I understand the FDA approved the emergency use of Pfizer for children ages 5 to 11, but please be aware it is still only approved as an emergency use authorization, and it is not yet fully FDA-approved. And there are no long-term safety studies. Please don't be coerced into thinking this is fully FDA-approved. That process is more likely to happen in 2023, but I don't know for sure. It's still not yet FDA-approved fully. I encourage the parents to watch back the FDA panel, and you will see that most of the panelists were clearly skeptical about these vaccines being mandated by school districts, and that the reasons they approved it was mainly so that the children who are immunocompromised can take it if they so desired. A child is more likely to be hospitalized with myocarditis, heart damage, and inflammation due to these vaccines than having COVID. Pfizer has not demonstrated any health benefits for children, and the potential harms are enormous. Number one, children are extremely low risk of dying of COVID. How low? In a meta-analysis combining data from 11 countries, children infected with COVID have a 99.9973% survival rate. The fatality rate in children ages 0-19 is 0.0027. The fatality rate in children is so low that Pfizer's clinical trials involving 2,300 kids did not detect any health benefit at all from their shots. Number two, the vaccine does not work very well, and you could tell because of the booster-
Thank you, Sochi. Your time is up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello, hello, everybody. Kim here. Good evening. I'm here today as a member of the Safer LBUSD Campaign. Again, this is a coalition of community organizations, clergy, parents, teachers, and students. And as a reminder for folks listening in, on September 27th, a young 18-year-old woman, Mona Rodriguez, was shot and killed by an ex-school safety officer. The officer has since been fired from the district and arrested for murder by LBD. This has been like 10 years rolled into one, and I want to publicly acknowledge Dr. Baker and Dr. Brown for their leadership during this last year. Never before have there been such head, heart, and hand leadership in the district, and we are, we as a community are grateful. I also want to express thanks to the leadership team that are meeting with the Safer LBUSD Campaign. We have begun conversations around alternatives to school officers with weapons, incorporating preventions like restorative justice and other mental health- Oh my goodness, preventions. I also want to thank Dr. Simon and her team for all the presentations and connections they are making to the community groups. We know you all spend a lot of time connecting with students and families. And to the board, I was able to catch some of yesterday's workshop, and I have to say that many parents felt really seen in the eye-ready presentation. The data was hard and jarring to see, but there was clear acknowledgement of specific ethnic groups that are struggling and creative strategies to help them succeed. I want to encourage board members to keep meeting with families in your trusty areas, especially those that are negatively impacted in their education. And finally, I want to encourage parents and guardians listening to connect with your individual schools and utilize the services like tutoring, the high school wellness centers, or family resource centers that are available. I had a chance to visit my son's wellness center this week, and the social worker was very helpful and shared that over 500 students stopped in last month. So I just want to say a big thanks all around. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Hello, board members and Superintendent Baker. My name is Azan Tabari. I'm from Wilson High School. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. First of all, the district recently has a coordinator position who has been working closely with us. We also, we're also proud to be part of the district that is currently working to install 21 solar panels at 21 elementary and middle schools in Long Beach. We are all extremely happy to see LBUSD prioritize environmental sustainability. With more than 1 million species currently at risk of extinction by climate change, it is clear that we have much work to do. Please continue to work with us to have a clean energy resolution. Thank you.
Azan, just, I wanted to share with you, I shared this with the Poly Green Schools campaign students that came in. We covered in our board workshop a facilities update, and included in that, we had a discussion around sustainability. So I encourage you, if you have an opportunity, to check out the board workshop.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome. It's actually evening-ish now, so I'll say good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rohan Reddy, and I am an 11th grader at Polytechnic High School. Today, I wanted to share a bit about my climate story and why it is crucial that LBUSD adopts a 100% clean energy resolution. I've always heard the phrase, "Think globally, act locally", and I'm so glad to be here today doing exactly that. Transitioning off of fossil fuels is particularly important to me because I experience the pain and suffering that the industry causes on a daily basis. Since the time I was six months old, I've had asthma. When I play my saxophone, I often start coughing uncontrollably. When I visit my grandparents in India, I fear going outside because the air is too polluted. Millions of people around the world have to deal with the same problems, and this is not a sustainable way of life. Generations to come deserve a safe earth to live on, and we are only on track for an even more dangerous one. It feels like every day there is another devastating hurricane, massive wildfire, or oil spill. Every summer, a new heat record is broken. It will only get worse from here unless we start acting now. Well, that's enough pessimism for one speech. I'm here today because I have hope for saving our future. All of those issues I just listed are completely preventable, and LBUSD can do its part in that prevention. Making changes locally is a great start, and we have to keep on working from there. We can save the world, one step at a time. It's time for LBUSD to take action. A transition off of fossil fuels saves money, encourages equity in our communities, and helps to secure a safe future. At this point, there is no reason for LBUSD to not move to renewable energy. We need to see a resolution passed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Rohan. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Barrera, and I'm from Long Beach Poly High School. Hello, LBUSD Board members and superintendent. Thank you so much for the action that you have taken so far, including the passage of Board Policy 3510, the implementation of carports, the investment in LED lights, and the appointment of a sustainability position, just to name a few. My name is Jordan Barrera, and I am a student at Long Beach Poly High School. And today, I was hoping to reiterate why it's important. The LBUSD shifts off of fossil fuels. Some of the many benefits of clean energy include saving money. Energy efficiency reduces costs. Electricity generated by clean energy is consistently cheaper than fossil fuels, and costs continue to drop. Money saved, which can be reinvested into classrooms, teachers, and enrichment activities. There is also an opportunity for improved health and student-teacher performance as clean energy improves indoor air quality, which reduces asthma and enables students to better focus on learning. Considering renewable energy, sorry, considering renewable energy results in cleaner air, the severity of COVID-19 would also decrease. On campus, clean energy projects could also serve as laboratories for students to gain real-world experience in applied science, technology, and engineering. Obviously, one of the most important reasons to transition is to reduce the climate and environmental impacts of the school district. Switching from fossil fuels to clean renewable energy sources is essential for protecting air, water, and global climate. There is also the opportunity to create local jobs as 60% of funds for energy efficiency are spent on local labor and the clean energy industry is expanding their workforce. School buildings also frequently double as emergency shelters and evacuation centers when disaster strikes. Solar plus battery storage can provide power and light to displaced community members even when grid power is down. Thank you, and we hope to continue working with you to make this important and crucial energy shift.
Thank you, Soli. I'm sorry, Jordan.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna suggest, we have two speakers left, that we allow for two more, colleagues? Yeah, we have two speakers left, so. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, I'm Soli Nickerson, and I'm a part of the Long Beach GSC Campaign.
Soli, I just called Jordan Soli, so welcome back.
Welcome, thank you. Hello, LBUSD Board, staff, and everyone else who is tuning in tonight. Today, we've talked a lot about LBUSD's existing initiatives to look towards more sustainable communities. I would also like to remind everyone here that the 2030/2040 timeline is completely doable. As we have mentioned in previous meetings, the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education passed a commitment to transition the school district off of fossil fuels by 2030 in the electricity sector, and all other energy sectors by 2040 in 2019. LBUSD isn't the only one. Along with Los Angeles Unified, school districts in Salt Lake City, San Diego, Oakland, Seattle, Old Lime in Connecticut, Miami-Dade are just a few examples. We recognize that the 2030-2040 timeline seems ambitious, but the largest school district in California and the second-largest in the nation did it. Please continue to work with us to make this happen. Thank you.
Soli, I've been mentioning to the other students that have come to the public comment at our board workshop, we covered a facilities update that included a conversation on our sustainability efforts. So if you have an opportunity, I'd urge you and any other students and our community members that are interested in finding out more about more work out in terms of our sustainability efforts, then check out that part of the video.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Mr. Nickerson. Mic off. Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity today to present to you all. My name is Malia Holm. I am a junior at Polytechnic High School. It is important that Long Beach Unified School District commits to 100% clean energy by 2030 and a gas phase-out by 2040, not only because it can save money and help close our district's budget shortfall, but because it is imperative to prevent the worst effects of climate catastrophe. The United Nations 2018 Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change reports that we must transition off of fossil fuels in the next 12 years to prevent further impacts on global warming and call on urgent actions across all sectors to dramatically reduce emissions and move to 100% clean renewable energy over the next decade. More than 200 cities, counties, 13 states, and even large corporations like Apple and Google have made 100% clean energy commitments. As a large energy consumer, LBUSD can and must do its part to eliminate its harmful greenhouse gas emissions. Implementing this resolution will do exactly that. Personally, as a student of LBUSD, I would like to see my school district become a climate leader, not only for the state, but also for the nation. Passing the 100% clean energy resolution will help encourage the city of Long Beach as a whole to also make strides towards greener energy solutions and contribute to the nationwide momentum happening across school districts to phase out fossil fuels and run on clean solar power. Thank you.
Thank you, Malia. So that was our last public testimony on items not on the agenda. I was just reminded by Board Member Kerr that my mic was off on the last comment that I made. So I just want to encourage anyone that's interested in finding out more about our sustainability efforts to check out our board workshop from earlier this morning where we received a facilities update and had a discussion as part of that facilities update on our sustainability efforts. Thank you to everyone that came in today and provided public testimony. As I've shared before, it's important for our community members to continue engaging us, continue sharing their thoughts, perspectives, addressing the board. This is your meeting. It is a public meeting, so we thank those of you that took time out of your schedules. We were listening, but as is the case with all items that are not on the agenda, we're not able to address those because they're not items on the agenda, but we are listening. I'm going to move on to staff reports. We have none. And then we will go into business items. So let's start off with our certificated personnel report. Mr. Miller?
Alright, thank you. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. For certificated personnel, we had appointments, we had 167. In-service changes, we had 10. Leaves of absence, we had 3. Separations, we had 1. Resignations, we had 1. Retirements, we had 4. And amendments, we had 2.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? So just want to make sure that we did receive a revised, updated, as of today, certificated personnel report. Any other discussion? Dr. Baker, do you want to share some updates or Mr. Zaid?
Actually, thank you for the opportunity for Mr. Zaid to share a little bit about the significance of tonight's moves from special contracts to regular contracts.
So I'd be happy to share that of the 167 appointments, 135 include So I'd be happy to share that of the 167 appointments, 135 include teachers, a few nurses, but certificated staff transitioning from being a special contract to going to a regular contract. This grouping includes some of our certificated staff that have been dedicated to the district and have served in their capacity for the last two to three years. And so we were able to offer them a regular contract, and this grouping also includes CTE teachers at our local high schools who support our pathways and college and career readiness. And so we are very excited to make this recommendation to the board tonight, and it encompasses a special moment for some of our teachers who are transitioning from a yearly contract to a regular contract and being full-time. It also allows for the establishment of their seniority. And so there are a lot of special features in a regular contract, and we're happy and excited to make this recommendation tonight on behalf of those staff members.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid. So how many new regular certificated personnel do we have now through this action? I'm going to put you on the spot, David.
How many teachers do we have?
Yes, yes.
We have approximately 3,400.
Awesome.
Yeah, in our system.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I know that after speaking with David a little bit about this detail here, how important it is for especially some of our younger families to have that stability in regards to employment. And so this is a really cool moment that we're able to provide that to, you said 135 families, right?
Right.
Really, really cool. So great job, David and Joe.
So just for clarification, that meant that we were at 3,200-plus, and then? Yeah, so that puts us at 3,400, right, David?
And let me just say, this is our first recommendation. We are hoping to come back with another recommendation in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid. Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Otto, how do you vote? Ms. Otto? Yep, your mic was on.
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so congratulations. That passes 5-0. Classified Personnel Report.
All right. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services and approved and recommended by the superintendent. For the classified and exempt personnel, we have appointments, 133. Leaves of absence, we have five. Resignations, we have eight. Retirements, we have one. And amendments, we have one.
Move approval?
Any discussion?
Second.
I think we got Mr. Otto as a second. Any discussion? Let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Otto, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 5-0. Finance Report A.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Otto, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 5-0. Finance Report B.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 4-0 with one abstention. Business Department Report.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to acknowledge a couple of very generous donations. There was a $10,000 donation from the Albert Parven Foundation for our Long Beach Call, and also a $2,000 donation for Robinson from California Emerging Technology, from the California Emerging Technology Fund. So I'd like to thank these organizations for their generous donations and how they help our kids.
Absolutely, including internships, right, with Long Beach Call. Any other discussion? Let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 5-0. Purchasing and Contracts Report A.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 5-0. Purchasing and Contracts Report B.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I recuse myself from any participation on this item because I have a remote financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor, which has done work for 2H Construction for more than five years prior to my election and is listed as a subcontractor on this proposed contract.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Otto, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 4-0 with one abstention. Other items. School Discipline. Superintendent?
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending expulsion of the following two students, and I'll take them separately for action. The first is student number 825. This student would be expelled under Education Codes 48915C2 and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until after June 15, 2022. However, Student Placement Services has made the recommendation that this student be expelled with the consideration for a suspended expulsion and an opportunity to attend Marshall Academy of the Arts GOC program, which is Guidance Opportunity Class Program within LBUSD.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes 5-0.
The second recommendation is for student 241, who would be expelled under Education Codes 48900M and would not be eligible to reapply for admission until after June 15, 2022. However, Student Placement Services has made the recommendation that this student be expelled with a consideration for a suspended expulsion with an opportunity to attend Marshall Academy of the Arts Guidance Opportunity Program within LBUSD.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Otto, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that also passes 5-0. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. 2021-2022 addendum to school opening MOU related to COVID-19.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we get just some background on this, Mr. Zaid?
Sure. The MOU is a collaborative effort between the district and our teachers' union, and there was a specific request to extend in-person meetings, so there is just one addendum. Everything else in the MOU is continuing, but the addendum was to extend in-person teacher in services or professional development until January 28. So that was the only aspect of, or the addendum for the MOU.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid. Any other discussion? Let's take a vote. Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that item passes 5-0. Next item, initial bargaining proposals from LBUSD to Teachers Association of Long Beach TALP, K-12 and CDC Head Start.
Move approval? Oh, information?
Both, both items, correct? Yeah. So can we get some information?
Sure. So each year, negotiations, the negotiations process begins with our teachers' union, as well as our district, sunshining their proposals. And the sunshine process for the public who are watching includes sharing which articles of the contract you want to open up to either revise, propose something new. And so when you read this, you're able to see some of the proposals that will be coming forward, representing the district, as well as some of the proposals that will be coming forward, representing the union. We would certainly encourage the public to take a look at that if they are curious about some of the initiatives, or some of the concerns, or some of the potential areas of the contract that will be proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid. And will those be available now that they're open for the public? Okay.
They're currently?
They're on the public agenda now.
Yes, they're available at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Questions? Yes.
Well, a comment, actually. I was happy to see that under Article 5, there's an item regarding full-day kindergarten. And I know from hearing from certain members of our community that people are very interested in having that option available. So I was very glad to see that we are sunshining that particular item.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Otto, you have your mics. Did you want to add anything? Oh, I like that. I can say that, and then you both turn it off at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Zaid. So that was only an information item. The next information item is the initial successor bargaining proposals from the Teachers Association of Long Beach, K-12, and CDC Head Start to LBUSD. So that's the us sharing, they're sharing aspect of it. Wow, are we a report of board members already?
I'd like to remind you that this is day two of, you know, board workshops in the morning and all-day work. So yes, this is the part where the reports, but we've?
You're just frustrating Board Member Kerr because she wants me to go now. Go, 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 Ms. Craighead. Let's start with Mr. Otto. You got an hour limit, Mr. Otto.
Don't tell him that.
Sure. In the beginning, we? What? So it was mumbled up here just a minute ago that we've been here for two days. We did a quick check beforehand. Only two of us went home overnight because we had so much going on. But seriously, the, we spent, we've basically spent two days here in a workshop. A workshop is not like a regular board meeting with an agenda that has specific things that are recurring, but it's an opportunity to meet together as a board with senior staff and to get a deeper understanding of things that are going on at the district. And let me tell you just a little bit about the things that we did. We had an update on health and wellness, things that were going on. We talked about centers at our high schools. We talked about things that our students have experienced during the 18-month pandemic. We talked then at great length about the new iReady data program that we are switching to, which gives us incredible information. Shout out to Chris Brown and his presentation, which was not only very informative but interactive, which is unusual in a forum like this, but it gave us an opportunity to really appreciate what it is that goes on when we talk about learning where our students are. I mean, the state does a system of testing, but not only is it, I was going to say antiquated, but that's not the word. It just takes a long time, and it takes a long time to get the data back. And so it's hard to know at a given moment in time where our students are or where your students are. And so this is a real step forward, and we now have a greater appreciation of exactly how that, how that works. Then we had an update on the multilingual offices that we have here. The, what we're doing for dual immersion, what we're doing for the bilingual programs. And it was very, very informative and talking about opportunities to expand. I was very impressed by the presenters and what it was that they said about how they've been working to make these programs better and increase them. Then we talked about board governance and development. And we talked about the governance processes and protocols. We talked about our Board of Education handbooks and things that we're trying to do to improve these meetings. We passed, after discussion back in August, we said that we wanted these meetings to be more focused on student outcomes and that we wanted to make sure that that happened. We wanted to have the board get its materials ahead of time so that they had a chance to think about what they were going to be voting on or working on at the meetings. And we saw how to, information about how to put agendas together as well. And we're really starting to make strides in those areas that we think will be a benefit to the entire district. This morning, we had a facilities update. Mr. Miranda did a terrific presentation about all the things that we are doing with our facilities and what the programs are, the goals. And I developed a much clearer understanding of how those programs work. And we once again talked about redistricting. And when I say that, we all know that we're going through a redistricting process now. It's very, very rapid. It needs to be completed by the first of December. And we specifically focused on the outreach that we're trying to do to our community. And outreach is important because we want everybody to have an opportunity to weigh in on this process and to see how the changes are made to the way our districts are. It's a complicated process. It's not the kind of thing that you can just say, oh, I get that. You really have to study it. Most people are concerned about school boundaries and where their kids are going to go to school. Our job is to do fair boundaries, not for where kids go to school, but for each of the districts. And they need to be more or less the same in terms of population, and we learned about that. One thing that I'm disappointed about is that two weeks ago, we had done our outreach, and we had 79 people that had responded, and two weeks later, we have 84. And I'm hoping that we're passing out, we're passing out flyers and mailing to everybody in the district. And I'm confident that we're going to have more people involved in this process, which gives it its legitimacy. So I think that was helpful as well. It's the first time that I've really felt like I sat through a process like this and learned so much in a very short period of time in an in-depth way about the way that we do our business at the district.
Mr. Otto, you'll be glad to know that the 84 is in addition to the first set of survey data.
Oh, so 79 plus 84?
Yes, we actually, more than doubled.
Okay. Double-doubled. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Baker. Ms. Craighead?
Yes, I have a couple of quick things I want to mention. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Lisa Nicholas on behalf of the TCC Family Health and Wellness groundbreaking event for their new site at Anaheim and Walnut. And this facility will include affordable housing, pediatric and adult health care, and a pharmacy. And to me, in my opinion, I feel like we need more facilities like this, more affordable housing. I know we have enough luxury housing in my estimation. And I'd like to see that there are organizations working towards this type of a model. And then also, I'd like to congratulate the Milliken PTA or PTSA, because it involves students, on celebrating their 65th anniversary, serving Milliken High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craighead. Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, I'll be brief. And I was frustrated because I really want staff to go home and have dinner with their family this week. That's why. So I will be very brief to say thank you to staff for the presentations over the last two days. I think for those 1.4 million people who are watching outside, thank you, Mr. Grayson. I think for those 1.4 million people who are watching outside, thank you, Mr. Grayson. It looks like it's easy. And to sit in the room and to hear staff and to, to have the conversations about the work that has gone into just gathering all of the information to put it in that kind of a format for us, it takes a ton of time. And that's time away from the actual work that they were all doing in service to students. So thank you for taking the time to put that together so that we are better informed and our community is better informed. I am grateful for all of it. And that's it. Other than, you mentioned PTSA. So I just got an email from one of the PTAs that I am a member of, and it is really easy to join PTAs this, these days. It's a website called Totum. So if you're interested in supporting those organizations, you can go on and you can join all the PTAs that you want to support. Please do so.
And just for clarification, that was 1.4 million from yesterday and another 1.4 million from today.
And we're up in the last half hour to 1.6.
I feel like for the public record, we should just acknowledge that we didn't actually have 1.4 million. It was significantly less than that, but in case anyone like, wants to, to come and check, check the numbers, we didn't have 1.4 million. But we are working really hard to get there.
Right. And it's not just about who's watching live, because many folks will watch, either because they're working or have other commitments and responsibilities, but you do see progressively the numbers, and I did check as well, Justin, that they get higher as more folks get an opportunity to go back and check out the, the videos.
Absolutely.
So I will throw out once again, please subscribe to the YouTube channel, because you can swipe away the notifications of meetings that you're not interested in. But it is a great in-the-moment reminder that there's good things happening in the district.
Now Eric's crossing out everything he was going to say.
Right.
That joke's not going to be as funny anymore, is it, Eric?
Correct, correct. But you know what? Okay. So this is, I'm probably sharing some behind the scenes, behind the curtain info. So I was talking with Justin, and I was like, how did we get to the 1.4 million conversation? He was like, because when I looked on YouTube, he thought he saw 1.4, but it was 1.414.
14.
14.
Well, that was because we were on lunch break.
Right, right, right. I was like, oh, 1.4, got it.
You didn't see the Spanish.
Can I acknowledge that it was a joke?
Right, right.
We're making your job harder.
But, but I think that that goes along with what I wanted to talk about. I'll also try and be brief here, is that at least for yesterday and a little bit of today, folks saw a little bit of the unpolished version of what we have up here, because a lot of the information for us was our first time seeing it and being able to comment and, and give input. Some of the things we often have at least some details on before the meeting. And so I hope that the public, those that did participate in yesterday and today, that was 1.4, enjoyed at least getting a, a raw experience, very similar to ourselves. So I had a couple of events that are coming up, not necessarily in my district, but that I've been linked to. One is a really, really cool one. It's called Beyond the Community, and it is a friend of mine named Malika Chris, who has a organization, Love Beyond Limits, and they host a fundraiser every year. And it is centered around helping young men and young women in the Long Beach community. But the part that's really cool is that, this is horrible to say, but I will anyway, her favorite daughter of mine, and Jordan, she has three daughters, and I tease about Jordan being my favorite, it's always her birthday on that. And so she's been working with her mom at least for the past five years, six years, to host this fundraiser to support other young women in Long Beach as her birthday gift. So it's been really cool. She likes basketball, so it's like a little basketball event over at Nelson Academy. It usually happens around 11 to 4:00. So I'm looking forward to that, and if I'm not mistaken, it's going to be on November 40, I mean 40th, well, November 20th, between 11 to 4:00. Also, I know in the city, we have Veterans Day weekend coming up, or Veterans Day on the 11th. And then the Vice Mayor is hosting an event called Vet Fest over at Houghton Park, which should be really exciting, as an old Navy town here, I think that it's always good to recognize and support our veterans. So it'll be a great opportunity for those in the community to go out. And lastly, and this was something that was important to me, is for our parents, especially with middle school and high school age students, I'm sure that you've seen it here, at least from the comments, is that we're seeing a high number of fights in the district, just for whatever reason. And so on my end, I just wanted to let the folks in my district know, students that, or the parents that have students at Poly and Cabrillo, and not so much at CAMHS, but obviously the Washington Middle Schools, that I've been working with Jill and talking with some of the district counterparts to see what we can do to try and support these, these schools as they work to reduce the amount of negative activities, especially making sure that our kids have safe harbor to and from school. So just wanted to make sure that all of my constituents know that we're, we're working on a plan.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So all joking aside, the 1.4 million, let me, let me dig a little bit deeper into that. And I'll use it in reference to the 163 community members that have participated in our redistricting. So two of the threads that are woven through everything that we've covered in the last day and a half, and thank you for the great summary, Mr. Otto, is the importance of community engagement and equity in our efforts. So whether we're talking about redistricting, whether we're talking about the data that was shared by Mr. Brown, whether we're talking about our facilities, right? We talked about community engagement and equity also centered the presentations, our wellness centers, for example. We got some numbers, and we had a really good, honest conversation about the needs of, meeting the needs of students and families in our district. So for the number of people that are watching tonight, or that will watch at some point, conversations really centered around upholding our commitment to community engagement. So we went from 79 to 84. Let's double that, right? Let's double the 163. So we need to do better on our end, but we also need to keep repeating the message seven times, right, Mr. Grayson, to our community members, how important and valuable your engagement with us is. And in some cases, we need to build trust. In some cases, we need to repair trust. In other cases, we need to build on the trust that we already have. And redistricting is not the end-all, be-all. I shared some comments about just how important it is for us to be targeted. But it's not just for a one-time thing. It's to be able to continue building on the engagement that our district has already done well, but also find those areas that we can do better. All right? So what I always hear from all of our colleagues, from all of my colleagues here and, and our team, is the openness to want to improve, to want to build, but it takes two to tango, right? So this is also a call to action, as Mr. Grayson shared today, for our community partners, our community members, our school sites. Some of us had the opportunity to hang out at Lincoln Elementary this past weekend, including Mr. Moskovitz, Mr. Suarez, I want to thank Principal Nemec there. We had eight organizations, basically, do a health-centered event, and we had a few hundred folks show up. In a community that has many challenges outside of the school, but in a community where on a Saturday morning, hundreds of folks showed up to their neighborhood school. So Board Member Kirk has shared, you know, for some parents, this, there just aren't a lot of opportunities right now to physically be at our schools. And so my comments are really around that, that we come off of a very challenging time, and still are in the middle of a very challenging time, but that we really have an opportunity here to engage. And even if you aren't able to, this time around, engage in our redistricting efforts, that we're coming back to your town, to your neighborhood, through our shared governance, community engagement, through our budget engagement process, but also at the school site level. I also had a chance to participate in a DLEC meeting where Mr. Suarez and Ms. Takahashi were also there, inviting community members to participate in our redistricting effort, not as an end-all, be-all, but as one opportunity to engage. Because in that very same meeting, we also had Mr. Sack share about the parent involvement opportunities at the school site level, and our parent involvement funds that come with some of our Title I funding, but also specific funding to build parent capacity, to build community member capacity, to engage at our school site level. So when we talk about engagement, engagement at the school site, engagement in your neighborhood, engagement in our district community partnerships, and yes, come and show up and provide public comment for us here, but there are digital portals to engage with us. We will have virtual meetings, and when we get to announcements, we'll share what some of those opportunities are. But, but if our commitment to equity is going to show up somewhere, in addition to the iReady data that was shown and shared, that we'll continue to share, it can only be guided and informed with our ability to engage and our community's commitment to engage with us. So wanted to highlight that because you did a great job, Mr. Otto, kind of taking us through the last day and a half. And we have some important threads that we've threw that day and a half, that include the engagement part, so that we can get to the 1.4 million, Mr. Grayson. And that's not just about us sharing information, it's about how that information is shared mutually. So we had a great last day and a half, and, and so echoing all the sentiments that my colleagues shared here, but the work continues, right? And the work is there. And so it's an open invitation for our communities to be there with us in this journey. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. So I'm going to build on that, Dr. Benitez, thinking about parent and caregiver engagement. And I just want to acknowledge both teachers and parents who this week are participating in parent conferences. Mr. Moskovitz and his team, along with Dr. Lund, they provided some really nice materials to center, to address some of the ways to talk about the incoming iReady data. And that is obviously a key aspect of setting a relationship between teachers and families, which we know that that connection is super important. Something that's different this year is that teachers in parent conferences are engaging both virtually and in person. And so it gives that option for a family who can be at home and have their teacher conference or come, come onto campus. So just really appreciate all the work. It's, it's a big week for our elementary teachers in both K-8 and elementary schools. And then just want to highlight a couple of things. Before we're back together, we have the High School Choice Fair at Cabrillo High School. I understand there will be some city things, including potentially vaccination opportunities and some other resources that are available to families living in that community. November 13th, it's a Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00. So just want to encourage the community to come out, especially if you're making a choice, if you're an eighth-grade parent. But also, if you're just an interested community member, I want to see what High School Choice is about before you're having to make that choice. We have an EL Parent Institute, and so I'll, I'll just share for parents, if you, on the homepage of our, of our website, if you click on Parent University, it gets you right to offerings for parents, as well as subscribing to the YouTube channel. You get alerts if you do that. So there's an upcoming English Learner Parent Institute that I noticed on the 15th. You're going to hear, I'm sure from the board, about redistricting meetings, so I will, I will skip that. Lastly, before I turn to Mr. Zaid, I want to acknowledge that we have a number of high school teams in playoff games this weekend. I will be at one of them. Dr. Camerio, do you want to, do you want to name them?
Sure, we want to cheer on Long Beach Poly. They'll be hosting Friday night. Jordan will be hosting also Friday night, and Milliken will be away on Friday night. So those are our three More League teams. Oh, there's a ton of water polo. Yeah, they all won. All of our More League teams won the first round of water polo. So congratulations to our More League teams.
Great, yeah, that's excellent. And then I...
And we have some students in here that are on the water polo team.
Well, not in...
But, I mean, but we have some parents of students.
We have students related, yes.
Whoa, Mr. Moskovitz, that was another easy toss-up for you.
While you're talking, I will say one other thing, though. So one of our principals over at Adam Elementary School, Claire Fieri, her daughter, who's a senior Milliken, won More League championship as a senior in tennis. So she's a tennis champion and going on to CIF. So since we're throwing out names, I'll mention Ms. Fieri's daughter.
All right. And I'll leave my last announcement to Mr. Zaid.
Thank you. I just want to announce to the public and to everyone that is watching that we are hiring. So I want to share, in the HR department, we are hiring substitutes. But I want to highlight two job fairs that our Personnel Commission is going to be hosting. One of those is going to be on tomorrow. It's in partnership with Pacific Gateway, and they are located at 4811 Airport Plaza. They are going to be hiring childcare workers, contract managers, executive secretaries, instructional aides, intermediate office assistant, translator interpreters, sign language interpreters, senior accountants, recreation aides, and nutrition service workers. And I want to share that there are some incentives. We will be doing, not only giving out information, but testing and interviewing right there on the spot. We're also waiving the cost of fingerprinting. And this isn't, is not the only job fair. This one is done with Pacific Gateway, and then for anyone who can't make it, there is another one next week, Tuesday, November 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Tomorrow is 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. But there's also the exact same thing, and on behalf of the Personnel Commission, I just want to make sure we announce to all of our families, if you know someone who needs a job, Long Beach is not just a great school district to send your kids to, but it's a great school district to work for.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid. Anything else, Dr. Baker? Announcements?
Sure, I'll just close out. Dr. Baker mentioned it, and you mentioned as well, Dr. Benitez, about our community engagement around redistricting. There's two upcoming community meetings, Monday, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom, and Monday, November 15th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. So please, that's one way for you to engage with us. And for the sake of Mr. Suarez, I will say one more time, LBschools.net/redistricting. Thank you, everybody.
And one, only additional announcement from my end, if Board Members do have any other announcements. For our community partners, our superintendent and I will be reaching out to you regarding our community engagement meetings to develop our broader student success vision and goals for our district, that then will help to inform our strategic planning process next year. So sometime between, let's see, how many days off should we do? Sometime in the next two weeks. Why don't we say that sometime between now and December, we will be communicating with our community partners around possible meeting opportunities with our board here in your town, in your neighborhood. I think that's it for announcements. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.